Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending. We're going to commence the Board of Select meeting held here in the Walk White Meeting Room on Monday, August 22 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Grayneck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, broadcast live on your local cable channel 18 and streamed live on the Mashpee website. It's now 6:30. We're going to convene the meeting, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if we could have a moment of silence. We do have some citizens that have signed up for poll of comment. I'll go in order. Sue Dangle.
I have copies of my comments tonight. I'll just pass them around. Do I have to do anything, or is this on? Is this on?
You're all set.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Susan Dangle, 762 Cottouatt Road. I thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here because in reviewing the proposed October town meeting warrant, I realized that the article authorizing funds for the design of the town's Phase Two sewer is missing. Last April, when the board delayed this article, verbal commitments were made to include this for consideration in October. As I understand that the planning board will be bringing additional articles for consideration this evening, I felt that I needed to bring one as well, one that would meet that expectation. The text of the proposed article is as follows. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to expend a sum not to exceed $350,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, local funds for the purpose of the preliminary design and production of a construction cost estimate of Phase Two of the wastewater collection system, the scope of said Phase Two to be determined by the select board upon consultation with the Sewer Commission or take any other action thereon. As I have come to understand, design is not eligible for state revolving fund loan, so we should use the ARPA funds cash to avoid having to borrow on this for the town's credit. As a side note, I learned while attending last week's Assembly of Delegates meeting that only six of the 15 Cape towns have applied for the additional county ARPA money, as we did, and that one town is back with a second request for funds. On August 4, I watched the Sewer Commission meeting with Interim Town Engineer Ray Jack presented a revised Phase Two map, and this article will give the board the funds to do a preliminary design when it settles on the study scope without having to wait until the spring. While the delay to May appears short, it will most likely result in missing another full year of state revolving fund eligibility. Without design complete to a point where cost estimates can be provided for planning and construction, the town would likely miss the August 2023 application deadline for SRF funds, making construction of Phase Two delayed even further. We all know the estuaries, the bays, the ponds are getting worse. We know we need to act. We know searing is the critical solution. We need these funds approved so we can keep things moving forward even as we learn more specific things about the needs of each water body. The DEP's presentation on July 11 made it very clear that pressure on Cape towns is coming. We have the ability and the desire to press that accelerator, as Mr. Collins likes to say, and stay on track. Clearly, I have found over the last year that projects of this size and scope have many moving parts. Delays are inevitable. That said, design is the phase of a project that takes the most time. We need to begin the design of Phase Two as soon as possible, even without all of the answers, or we will exponentially delay our wastewater efforts at a time when the pressure builds and our waters are screaming for help. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Ken Dubrowski.
Ken Dubrowski, 3 Grayfield Landing. Had a bunch of stuff here, but I think I'm just going to be very brief. Yeah, I'm just here just to express my frustration over the events of the last, the last two weeks. It would have been a doozy, but even before that, we've had a series of events that, you know, as a taxpayer, you know, makes me kind of scratch my head a little bit. I mean, the one, I've got a couple here that stick in my mind. It was the whole thing with the finger pointing between the sewer committee, the town manager, and the engineer that, you know, resulted in, you know, I guess, one of the selectmen initiating an investigation. You know, I didn't, I didn't ask Mr. Collins for the report. I know I could have, but, I mean, I didn't need to. It was bad, and the guy resigned. So, you know, I didn't need to know the details. But I guess, you know, to just, my, my context here is a little higher level. I mean, the sewer project is 45 million bucks. That's a lot of money for our town. Our total operating budget's only 68 in a year, so this is big bucks. And, you know, we are now going to, I guess, we're going to, at some point, you know, the prior speaker is getting, getting delayed a little bit, we're going to go ask for funding for Phase Two. And I'm sitting here saying, you know, it's, it's, I think we're entering a phase where there's a crisis of confidence in the board. I mean, if you take a look at your website, you know, it says that the board is the, you know, the executive authority of the town and handles all the appointments, both of employees and all these committee guys. And so basically, they're your guys. If they're not doing their jobs, I mean, it lands on, on this group. So, again, you know, it's just frustrating to see all these missteps. We go from controversy to controversy to controversy, and it's just, it's tiring. It's just unbelievable. The one good thing that's happened in the last six months is we were able to get Raymond Jack. Now, whoever convinced him to sign on board, you know, kudos to him. And if anybody's interested in getting a primer on, I'm running out of time, on the, on Phase Two and the status of the sewer plan, take a look at the video from the last Sewer Commission meeting. His presentation, you know, was, was very enlightening. But again, I'll be back next week to talk about the residential tax credit, which is another, you know, source of my frustration in that I don't hear anything from you guys as to where your heads are at with this thing. Are we going to do it? Are we not going to do it? I mean, we spent 25 grand for software to do it. If we weren't convinced that we were going to do it, why go out and buy the implementation software? It's a bit of a head scratcher for me. So, again, like I said, it's, you know, I, I appreciate, okay, I appreciate Mr. Cotton trying to pour water, I mean, oil on the waters at the end of last meeting, but again, the focus, it wasn't, it's not just optics, I think. It's that fact that I think we got, we need some fundamental attitude changes here. Again, but like I said, I'm out of time. See you guys in two weeks.
Thank you. Next up, Scott Murray.
Hi, I'm Scott Murray. I'm just going to listen for now. I have some concerns about the wetland stuff tonight, but I'm just going to listen for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia McKinnis.
I'm channeling Katie Porter. Hi, I'm Marcia McKinnis from Dixon Drive, and I want to thanks, start by thanking Terry Cook and Wayne Taylor and Rodney Collins and Chris Ball. They know why. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the Affordable Housing Committee, which is a priority for a lot of us, as you know, based on recent meetings for the planning, that the planning board has been sponsoring. And I've taken a look at the contract that we have, and I really think that there's enough flexibility in the contract to allow the town manager to add the Affordable Housing Committee meetings to the Mashpee TV's recording and broadcasting schedule. First, the contract doesn't specify a limit on the number of meetings that they'll record. It doesn't put a dollar figure in each recording, rather, as you know, because you all signed it, the contract is for a fixed amount. Second, while the contract does include specific boards and committees, it doesn't exclude any either. In fact, it provides that other meetings can be added with a week's notice. And I understand that the town actually determines this list and sends it to Mashpee TV, so it's totally within your control. Third, the contract calls for reporting, recording the Board of Health and FinCom meetings, but these haven't been on their schedule since March of this year. So, I think what we're, we're paying for services that we are not receiving because we never asked for them. So maybe that might create a little bit of room in the budget for other things. Fourth, there have been five Affordable Housing Committee meetings recorded and archived in the past, so there is precedent for this, recording this group. Here is a summary of the viewership, and I'm sorry, I don't know if there's a way to show the people this, but as you can see, there, even though there hasn't been a recording of Affordable Housing Committee meetings since, oh, thank you, since April of last year, as a topic, it's of great interest to people. Now, this includes their meetings with you, joint meetings with the select board, also their meetings with the Affordable Housing Trust. But look at Sewer Commission. You've heard two people talk about it tonight. They're almost as, people are almost as interested as they are in the Sewer Commission. So, for this reason, I urge the select board to authorize the town manager to add Affordable Housing Committee meetings to the MTV schedule, and I really hope that you all have a chance, if not to attend the meeting on the 30th, at which they're going to review their nomination. I hope that you'll be able to see it. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn McCarthy.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Chairman. Hi, Board. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm Glenn McCarthy. I'm from 16G Place in Poppin' Esset. I'm going to talk a little bit and address wetlands. I live in the wetland, in the floodplain. My backyard is in the floodplain. I'm in the wetlands of Mashpee all the time. I'm in Poppin' Esset Bay, Wacoit Bay, and ponds, and not just big ponds, but small ponds. Our wetlands are super important, and it's super complicated if you start reading the language and the words. I mean, yeah, it gets overwhelming. So, I want to try to do this in a, in maybe a strange way, but a message, and speak a little bit for the wetlands. Think of the wetlands when you look at that like, like your lungs, right? You really need your lungs. Without your lungs, you're going to die. Think of the floodplain like your stomach. You know, it's a place to put all your stuff before you digest it, right? It's, maybe it's not as important as your lungs, but if your stomach's all messed up and you can't digest your food, you're not going to be very healthy either. Our wetlands are super important, right? Our wetlands filter nitrogen. They take out nutrients, which we're spending a lot of money doing. They manage stormwater for free. You don't have to actually spend anything. They slow floods, and with sea level rise, we're going to see a lot more challenges around floods. They provide habitat for wildlife. They're really important. Now, think about putting lots of cement and buildings and stuff and structures in your wetlands. It's kind of like smoking, right? I mean, I like my lungs. I love them, but smoking's really attractive, too, and so I smoke. So, building and overbuilding in your wetlands is kind of like smoking. And, you know, if I look around Mashpee today, I mean, folks, we, we got a two or three-pack-a-day habit going on here, and it's not going to go to a good place. And then, the final thing I would say is, people make a lot of money building in wetlands. They make a lot of money building in floodplains, and it brings a lot of tax money to the town, right? When you look at it, please look at it holistically, not just what is the tax revenue this year, but what is this going to cost me over 20 years? Not building sewer systems was a great deal. We got lots of money, and we were able to spend it, but the bill came due. If we overfill our floodplains and our wetlands when the storm surges and when the waters come in, our roads, our gas, our electric, all kinds of stuff is going to go underwater. It's going to cost an awful lot of money to fix it. The last thing I'm going to say, who wants you to smoke? Who encourages you to smoke? It's not your mom. It's not your dad. It's not the people who love you. It's tobacco companies. Why do they want you to smoke and ruin your lungs? Because they make an awful lot of money doing it. So, I would also ask that you please do what you can to not only protect our wetlands, but restore our wetlands, bring back our health. And, yeah, there's real challenges to this, and we got to balance them. I understand that, but that's my perspective on it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, Greg McKelvey.
Good evening. Happy Monday to you. I'm Greg McKelvey, 11 Menucha Road, Mashpee. For sake of transparency, I'm on the Mashpee Finance Committee and running for Board of Select this next special election. Just a couple of things I want to bring before your attention tonight. First, to say, very grateful to see that the Blue Sky contract is up for affirmation tonight. That's the cell tower that we've been waiting for years to get up. I don't know if you remember, we had a big incident down in the Poppin' Esset, New Seaberry area a couple of years ago when that big storm came through, knocked out everything. No one could get in touch with emergency services or anything. So, this is a public safety issue, and I'm glad it's finally being addressed. And also, it's an economic issue. We live off data today. People work from homes. They're in their cars working, doing appraisals, and whatever they might be doing, it's needed. So, I'm glad to see this is going forward and that it is finally going to happen in our area, and I think it'd be a big benefit to the town. The second thing is regarding the articles that are coming up for tonight. You know, you've had two meetings before this that you, we didn't really do any public discussion of the articles. We have, I think, next week, the articles have to be executed, if I'm not mistaken. Not a lot of time to vet these. I would ask that you give each one due consideration and vet each one properly. And I'm 100% in support of a 150-foot buffer for fertilization. That's a no-brainer, right? We talked about phosphates. We don't want to be putting fertilizers or bad fertilizers in a place where they shouldn't be. So, I think that's a good idea. 150-foot fertilization, bam. That's all right. And lastly, Young Lay spoke about the Phase Two of the searing. We all know that that's got to happen down the road. We started looking at that, but also, I want to remind everyone that there's a cost to this, and everyone needs to be transparent about the cost and understand that, what that is, so that the taxpayer can make the best decision. That's all. And once it gets out there, it's out there, and people will know, and they can make that choice as a town, and that's where it should be. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your service and your consideration.
Thank you. I'd accept a motion to accept and approve meeting minutes for August 8.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Appointments and hearings. Discussion on approval of the resignation Human Services Committee, Ebony Steele, whose term expires June 30, 2023. Any questions or concerns? I take a motion to accept and approve the resignation.
So moved.
With a thank you letter? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and please send a letter of regret.
Discussion on approval of rescinding the appointment of Gary Schuman to the Affordable Housing Committee.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Discussion on approval of the special event application, American Lung Association, 38th Annual Auto Skate Bike Trek Pass through Saturday, September 24th through the 25th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I, I mean, I'm assuming, has this been done before? I mean, yeah, it has. Just, I would never paid attention to it. I was actually intrigued by maybe doing it, but I'm good.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That motion passes as well. Communications and correspondence? New business. Discussion on approval of First Amendment to the lease agreement and First Amendment to memorandum of lease agreement, Blue Sky Towers 3 LLC Doing Business As, BSTMA 3 LLC. Could you speak for this, or is there someone present to speak to?
This, this part is, because of the change of that 700 feet, we had to redo a portion of the lease, so it's, it's a very minor thing on this particular signature.
Just a modification of the location.
Yeah, modification of location, yeah.
And that was a location that was acceptable to the original plaintiffs in the litigation, which has been resolved.
A couple. Does the board have any questions?
I, I actually had to cook one, but if, as far as, like, after tonight, are there any more going back to court? Is, are they, is this, is this going to happen? Because I've been, I'm so done with getting calls.
To my knowledge, this is it, and I have no knowledge to the contrary.
Mr. Chair.
Tom, any questions? Only things I had were kind of comments was, I would prefer that the sketches are referenced on the cover page and written in somewhere to reflect that they're part of the complete package. I'm sorry, part of the? The sketches are completed, are part of the complete package, so that they're referenced, identifying the limits of construction. I didn't see where there was, the other thing would be including an orientation map to show where that particular, you know, the sketches are at such a scale, you can't identify where on the property they are, where it relates to, other than Red Brick Road for a point of orientation.
I see what you mean. I mean, I think, you know, because it's like, there's a block, but.
It's a 28-acre parcel.
Right. Is it just like in the middle of the woods?
Where, where exactly it is. And then, you know, I think standard language throughout should be kind of limiting their, the work area to, you know, the sketches is the only thing that I would suggest adding. And if everyone's fine with those comments, I'd, I'd recommend a motion to approve First Amendment to the lease, BST site number Mass. 5112, slash BST site name Mashpee, with effective date of August 22, 2022, by and between the town of Mashpee, Mass., Massachusetts Municipal Corporation, and Blue Sky Towers 3 LLC Doing Business As, BSTMA 3 LLC, with suggested edits.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. This is a subsequent follow-up with the First Amendment to memorandum of lease agreement, Blue Sky Towers 3 LLC Doing Business As, BSTMA 3 LLC. Concerns are the same on this one?
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at now?
This is the memorandum.
Is this for the Eversource? Is that what you're talking about?
No, there was two components to the First Amendment. There was, there was the, the actual lease agreement, and then the memorandum of lease agreement. Is the way it's worded on the agenda?
Statute of the parcel ID number.
I mean, do you need a subsequent motion on the same?
I, I know, I know.
I was a little confused by it.
Yeah, no, you're right.
It looks like it's two separate items.
You are correct. I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's the way I interpreted it. So, for me, the, the comments are the same on this one.
Yes, sir.
Identical. I'd accept a motion to approve with the same verbiage.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. That motion passes. Discussion and approval of license to enter and use real property, 101 Red Brick Road, Mashpee, for Eversource Energy. These two, you know, they're, they're all kind of piggybacking each other. Comments are the same. You know, whereas the Eversource agreement and they're asking to do particular work, I'd just like to see that limited and confined to the project area, as is defined in the sketch, with, with verbiage kind of added into, to that effect.
Yes, sir. And, and this is just an easement for them to be able to perform the maintenance work.
Right.
But it's, excuse me, it's also, this is the license agreement we have coming before you to add to the agenda of the warrant, the Eversource easement that has to be done on a permanent basis because of their use through there. So, the license gets them to be able to go ahead and build it, but the October warrant is something that they need to secure as well.
Okay, and you can add at the appropriate time.
Yeah, that's not for now, but I'm just letting you know that that first one is really going to be a temporary thing until we do the permit on October.
Got you.
I'll motion to approve the license to enter into the use of real property of 101 Red Brick Road, Ashby.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Old business. Discussion on approval of Town Manager's twenty twenty-three goals, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three goals. Did the board have any questions, concerns, comments on any of the items listed?
I'm good with it.
Me too.
Sounds like a busy, busy year for you coming up.
I did have a couple that I kind of added notes to. There was one concern that I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Mr. Collins is the web-based platform YouTube hadn't transitioned over to the new seal. So on the sixth bullet item, the town seal continue the changeover of buildings, door seals, patches, logos, and other materials or uniforms with the new town seal. I included web-based platforms to that.
David, just so you're aware, actually this afternoon I went down and made those changes. So it may not be completely done now, but they are making the changes as of today.
Thank you.
We had a vision.
Must have heard your thoughts.
And we are getting the sign out here changed upfront very quickly. I know a lot of the town vehicles have already been changed, and then we're working on the other things as well.
On the next bullet item, the town bylaws reviewed with staff and relevant groups to recommend consideration of proposed bylaws resulting in reduced nitrogen loading. I would, I'd prefer to, you know, reduce all contaminants, you know, making a point to go beyond just nitrogen loading, even though that is the direction of the state recommended in the select board meeting, the following language on that. The rest of them all, you know, look fine. I did have additionally, if you would consider, work on addressing stormwater controls around all surface waters in and around Mashpee. Another one would be developing a grant funding strategy that supports local issues of priority concerns, which would provide support to applying for such grant opportunities. Another one would be to consider and evaluate potential incentives.
Potential what, sir?
Potential incentives that promote ADUs as a mechanism to address affordable housing shortfalls. And develop and promote a strategy to improve diversity in the hiring practices of the town, Any discussion on the suggested?
No, I mean, I'm assuming you would have to.
I can give you this.
And then probably bark it up and?
I think at least one of these needs a little bit more clarity, so I know exactly what the objective is. But aside from that, there's no issues, at least on my end.
And I can follow up with you offline.
Yep.
On that.
You don't need to vote for that another, right?
I'm sorry?
You don't need to vote or any of that, do you? Or would you like one?
I think those that were listed, the board should have a consensus that you're in agreement. In terms of the amendments, I'm fine, except I just need clarity in regards to diversity. I'm a strong advocate of diversity, but the fact is, we've got to make sure that they're able to meet minimum qualifications and we've got to make sure that they're qualified and competent for the job.
Absolutely. Which I'm fine with. I know, I know, looking at a lot of the various towns and departments and things, you know, you don't, you know, for a town that's as diverse of our, as ours, I don't know, you see, you know, representation in all departments that is reflective of the diversity of the town. So any way we can work towards changing that would be encouraged.
I have certainly endeavored to do that.
Not sure how to do it, but.
Yeah. I've certainly endeavored to do that, and I think we've made some strides. And in terms of the ad that goes into every single one of our postings, we not only post it, but we practice it. And the other thing is, we want to make sure that, all things being equal, we're hiring residents, which has been something that we've focused on.
That's excellent. So entertain a motion to accept and approve Town Manager's Goals for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing, hearing none?
Could I have a copy of your amendments to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Discussion and approval and recommendations on draft two of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Town Meeting Ward.
Busy list.
Yeah, this was some very complicated reading, to say the least. Very extensive. We're going to need some explanations on this.
Mr. Chair, do you want to bring the town planner up first, or do you want to start your articles and when, you know, how do you want to do that? But I think the town planner would like to speak on a couple.
Is the board comfortable with getting started with the first few? And then we can bring in Mr. Lahert up to explain some of the elements. Yeah, we'll get there soon enough. So we're going to number these as we go along, just for reference.
We can't never yet.
I'm sorry?
Okay, I was just looking, I guess we can't, for our sake.
For our sake.
Just for now, I think, just so we can stay on top.
Because as you go, you know, some may come off, some may go on, and you just, you know, you could mess it up.
To this point, it's pretty hard to.
Noting this copy is draft two and for reference purposes only.
We'll reference page number two.
Correct.
Okay.
Article one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million four hundred and eighty thousand, amount to be determined from the wastewater stabilization fund to the temporary borrowing outside two and a half or take any other action relating there to. This was submitted by the treasurer.
This is the, you're asking, members, these are solid.
Got you.
So does the one million four eighty replaced with one million two five four? Is that, no. Is that correct?
One million two five four.
Yes.
One million two five four, four fifty.
That's affirmative.
I make a motion to vote and approve and to add.
And so recommend?
Recommend.
And add.
Approve and to add.
I second.
Hearing first and second, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes.
And that's with the replacement of one million four eighty being replaced with one million two five four, four fifty.
So now we make a motion on the amendment of the added language, or that was?
We added, we said.
We, in the motion. That's why I just wanted to make sure we clarified. So now we don't have to go back to it, we're all set.
Next article on the list, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million, this is going to be replaced by the one million two hundred and sixty-eight, nine fifty, amount to be, from the wastewater infrastructure investment fund or WIF, to the temporary borrowing outside two and a half, or take any other action relating there to, submitted by treasurer.
So I'll motion to recommend and adopt to the warrant.
Second.
Hearing first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes.
And just to clarify again, that's with the new number, one million two sixty-eight, nine fifty.
Correct, I did substitute in the reading, the one million two sixty-eight, nine fifty. Next article. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of eight thousand four hundred for, from revenue available for appropriation with said funds to be distributed as follows. Two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four to the planning temporary wage account, five thousand two thirty-six to the planning full-time clerical salary account, and two hundred to the Medicare expense account, or take any other action relating there to, submitted by the finance department.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Next article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of twenty-two thousand from revenue available for appropriation with said funds to be distributed as follows. Twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-five to the fire department management salary account and three hundred and fifteen dollars to the Medicare expense account, or take any other action related there to. By the fire department, and this is just gap funding we're asking for. Mr. Manager.
I don't recall the specificity to it.
It just says.
I know that I've got the finance director here, and also we've got somebody from the fire department coming in Thursday for the finance committee who had the question.
So this is additional funding for the new appointed fire chief and deputy fire chief. When the budgets were created, it was based on the prior salaries.
Correct.
So this is for the new contracts that were agreed upon, and this will fill that gap.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Is that approve and recommend?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
This brings us to the floodplain zone provisions. Evan? Mr. Planner, if you could join us for this.
Good evening.
Good evening. So the article, read it for the record, to see if the town will vote to repeal article nine, article eleven floodplain zone provisions of the zoning bylaw in its entirety and replace it with the new article eleven floodplain zone overlay to read as follows. Subsection one seventy-four dash fifty-eight, the purpose and intent, purpose of the flood zone overlay is to ensure the public safety through reducing threats to life and personal injury. Two, eliminate new hazards to emergency response officials. Three, prevent the occurrence of public emergencies resulting from water quality, contamination, pollution due to flooding. Four, avoid the loss of utility services, which if damaged by flooding would disrupt or shut down the utility network and impact regions of the community beyond the sight of flooding. Number five, eliminate costs associated with the response and cleanup of flooding conditions. Six, reduce damage to public and private property resulting from flooding. There's additional provisions in here. Did you want to, the board want to read through them all, answer questions later, or give a town planner a chance to speak to it in its entirety?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I actually just have a couple questions that maybe, and then you'll probably answer.
Sure.
All on that. Can you just, when you go into what this means, can you just explain, like, my understanding of this is you're replacing floodplain zone provisions with floodplain zone overlay. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then this is a lot of more terminology? It's, so if you could explain what the overlay and the?
I can explain if it, if it's okay with the board. I'll explain what necessitates the repeal and replacement in the first place, and some of the technical components of the proposed bylaw change, and what the impact will be. And I'll start with what has necessitated the proposed amendment. The town has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program since the late seventies. I think it was nineteen seventy-eight when the town opted into this program. This is a program that is managed and run by the Federal Environmental Management, or excuse me, Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. And they provide standards for construction and for enforcement of floodplain provisions throughout municipalities who participate in said program. And they have provided standards for what towns are required to regulate to maintain good standing in the National Flood Insurance Program. For many years, it's been my understanding through conversations with the Barnstable County Floodplain Coordinator, who we work with in Mashpee, to ensure compliance with our program and the community rating system, which we participate in also, that defines flood insurance rates for those residents who have real property in the floodplain. And she notified my department that FEMA is going to begin enforcing the, these various standards. So Mashpee's existing floodplain provisions are lacking in numerous administrative requirements that are minimum required standards to maintain good standing in the federal or national flood insurance program. So at a minimum, we're making sure to include required language that is mandated by FEMA to maintain good status in the program. Additionally, we don't propose, the current floodplain provisions have some conflicts with the Massachusetts State Building Code. And we want to ensure that conflicts between both the building code and things like the Wetlands Protection Act are removed and mitigated, as this bylaw deals with only the minimum required standards that FEMA requires for, again, certification and compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. And we don't want to have building code-related provisions in our zoning bylaw because it creates the appearance that the zoning board appeals has the authority to vary those requirements, which they do not. We must maintain minimum compliance with both FEMA regulations and the Massachusetts State Building Code. So those conflicts are resolved in the language you have in front of you. Same with wetlands bylaws, or excuse me, wetlands regulations. Those are obviously enforced and implemented by the Conservation Commission, and there's no ability to vary those requirements, other than those prescribed within the wetlands regulations themselves. So that's what has necessitated the change. I mean, this is something that the town must adopt. Otherwise, those folks who reside in the floodplain and maintain flood insurance and often have their mortgages married to their flood insurance, if we don't adopt at least the minimums required standards as defined by FEMA, again, that are those standards that generally pertain to administrative management of permits in the floodplain, such as those in the jurisdictions of the building department and the conservation department. And so, as I understand, there are between five and six hundred or so individuals that have flood insurance in the town of Mashpee. If, again, if we, if we don't adopt the minimum regulations, their flood insurance could be in jeopardy. I should note that we are enabled, the town is enabled and empowered to go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code and FEMA standards to make the town more flood-safe. So one deviation from the existing condition with regard to floodplain provisions is that we have proposed in this bylaw a prohibition on the use of fill in the floodplain. So you'll often see in the Pappanessen neighborhood and in areas around South Cape Estates, et cetera, it is a very common practice and a lawful practice to bring in several cubic yards of fill and artificially raise your lot out of a special flood hazard area and get what's called a LOMER F, a letter of map revision, whereas you revise the flood map. whereas you revise the flood map essentially to no longer include your property. So, we propose in this bylaw the elimination of, of that permitting pathway. Um, so it's more respectful of, of development in the floodplain and, and natural topographies, not requiring the use of things like retaining walls around properties to artificially raise structures and, um, and out of, and get them out of the floodplain. It doesn't prohibit the development of, of any structures in the floodplain, but it would require, um, those structures to be either, you know, redeveloped or, or new development to adhere to, um, a higher standard, which would be the construction of a dwelling on elevator, or on stilts or pilings, or using a solid wall foundation with flood vents. Essentially, what a potential property owner would lose is the ability for a full finished basement in the floodplain. This does get the town more points essentially in the community rating systems, and theoretically, as a result of that higher standard, folks' flood insurance rates would go down. That's essentially it. This, again, this bylaw does not propose any prohibitions of development in the floodplain, but it, um, achieves the minimum standards established by FEMA, removes conflicts with the Massachusetts State Building Code, and, um, mitigates, uh, potentially negative impacts for development in the floodplain by no longer allowing the use of fill to artificially raise properties out of the floodplain. And I'm happy to answer any particular questions you may have.
Evan, it says the town of Mashpee designates the building commissioner to be the official floodplain administrator. Who was it before?
We've never had an officially designated floodplain coordinator that has won such administrative requirement that FEMA says we are lacking and need to, uh, come into compliance with. So, it could be anyone, but since the building commissioner is the one who's essentially reviewing the building permit applications and, um, uh, conducting inspections for properties in the floodplain, he's the logical choice to serve in that capacity.
And if I could just add, uh, since enforcement is one of my goals, we wanted to make sure that we could specify who was responsible.
Very good.
Any questions, Tom?
Yeah, just, um, a shot while ago, uh, at the county level. They always say, uh, the county commissioner had talked about the possibility of, um, removing some of the, um, abandoned cranberry bogs that have been, um, used as a, or called a wetland. But where it was, they're thinking of a ban, uh, having those restored to their original condition. Have you heard any further conversation on that at all?
Um, I know that it's a strategy for, like, nutrient removal to restore, um, defunct cranberry bogs to a, a natural, um, wetland. Such an endeavor, uh, it was certainly something that I think the town should continue to support, but wouldn't necessarily, this article wouldn't necessarily impact because my understanding is cranberry bogs are designated as a wetlands anyway.
So, it wouldn't be reversed? She seemed to indicate the commissioner had indicated to me that, uh, they were looking to abandon them and restore them to the natural condition. Is that, would that be affected by that or this?
This article would not impact our, our ability to do that, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Evan, can you, that part that you mentioned about not using fill to raise elevation?
Yes.
Are you referring to, is that?
It's in the general prohibitions.
Sixty-seven dot one?
Let me take a brief look here.
Looks like it touches a little bit on that. I just, I just want to be clear on.
There's, we include as a prohibition, I should elaborate a bit on the prohibition. It does not allow, again, the use of fill, um, it says, I'll, I'll read it for the record. No person shall fill, place, or dump in a floodplain any soil, loam, peat, sand, gravel, rock, or other material substance, refuse trash, rubbish, debris, or dredged material with the exception of landscaping material as allowed under section one seventy-four sixty-seven point one of this bylaw. No letters of map provision based on fill or letters of map amendment based on fill will be permitted. And so, we do create some exceptions to that prohibition of fill, and it's really for the purpose of allowing, um, uh, someone to bring in landscaping material or utilize fill for a new septic system, for example, to landscape around their foundation, assuming they're using a solid wall foundation with flood vents. And, but the requirement is, you can use that material for the purpose of landscaping around that foundation, but it must be graded to, to meet the natural grade of the property within ten feet of that foundation. Additionally, there's exceptions created in the bylaw for someone who wanted to reconstruct, um, a revetment or, uh, like a stone seawall, or, um, groin, or utilize, um, uh, for beach renourishment. You can obviously use dredged material for the purposes of appropriately permitted beach nourishment.
I think you made a compelling argument, you know, um, for the sake of, um, complying with both state and federal laws. I believe we should, you know, make a motion to accept and approve this, to keep people, um, retain people's ability to, uh, utilize the flood insurance that they're paying for. I don't know if the board feels the same.
It's funny, I, I, I feel pretty good about it now. I don't think we, we, we have until next meeting before we have to adopt, right?
Execute, yes.
Before we have to execute. I actually, Evan, thank you for kinda write to the, you know, right, cut to all the craziness because you cleared up a lot of, uh, questions in my mind. I don't, I don't expect to have any even questions in a couple of weeks, but, um, I'd be curious to see if, if the rest of the board feels, you know, we can just kinda move on to the next article, maybe come back to this in two weeks. But I don't think I have any, I don't really have any reservations at this point, but I kinda.
So, you're making a motion to put a hold?
Yeah, I don't think we even have, yeah, we just.
I believe you have to execute September twelfth, correct?
So, next meeting.
So, because of Labor Day, uh, the twelfth is the next meeting.
Yeah, I think, I, I feel a little more comfortable just with the time if, if we can feel some questions from some of the residents and.
Sure. If, uh, if you have any questions or, or leave tonight with, uh, you know, questions, concerns, you know, feel free to funnel them to me through the town manager.
Little bit of time won't hurt, so.
Well, that's it, I just.
I make a motion to put a hold on this article until September twelfth.
Second.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor of putting this article on hold, say aye.
Aye.
No, uh, the motion does pass.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, um, if, if any board member has questions regarding this, can we, please get them so that we can try to get this resolved on the twelfth?
Submit them in writing directly to you, not to the rest of the board.
That's what I'd prefer. So, we can get the answers and have them ready for the board on the twelfth. Because if we can't answer the question on the twelfth, then we're out of time.
Right.
Yes.
And, and folks' insurances are in jeopardy, it sounds like. Moving on to the next article.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Revised draft article, um, from Town Council, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the following definitions in a new subsection one seventy-four dash three point one, floodplain management definitions as follows.
Uh, this one is very simple. These are the definitions that are currently not within our, the, the zoning bylaw in its present condition. And these are the definitions that FEMA will require us to include in our zoning bylaw to maintain minimum compliance with the community rating system and National Flood Insurance Program.
So, these are, um, essentially tied to the previous article.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Are you looking to hold this as well?
I'm, I'm, and I'm good with their definitions, I mean, we can.
Their definitions.
I'm good with either way. You wanna, you wanna just, I motion to approve.
And submit.
And submit, uh, revised draft article inserted from Town Council's email on seven twenty-seven.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. And when you said submit, that means recommend?
Recommend, it's, yeah, correct.
Next article we have is, uh, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one hundred thousand from revenue available for appropriation to cover costs associated with the development of a plan inventory assess and recommend improvement of the town's stormwater infrastructure, or take any other action related thereto.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So, I'm assuming, Mr. Collins, this is, I know, I know it's through Public Works, but I guess my question is, is this for potential outside consulting? I'm assuming we're not, we're already paying DPWs, so.
First of all, I gotta get to the right page here.
Page eleven.
Yes, that was, uh, submitted by, I believe, the DPW director.
That's what it says, so I'm assuming because she's, her department is responsible for drainage and all that, it has to fall under her purview?
That is correct. That's my understanding.
Are we paying for a consultant or another firm to come in and do the?
It's, uh, for the items that are listed.
Yes, it's somebody from outside coming in.
Okay.
It's, it's not our staff, it's not our staff.
Right.
Right, that's, yeah, that's, that was a big question, because I know it's put up by DPW. I'm assuming it's outside consultant, but, uh, obviously, I know we talked about, you know, as, as the chair mentioned earlier, you know, it's not just nitrogen, you know, these drainage, I mean, there's systems that are basically, you know, heavy rain dr- days, they're flowing down on the street, and they're flowing right into rivers and streams. And I, I can't believe that I, you can actually visit them and, and see what's going on. I mean, if we don't stop that, it doesn't matter what we do with, you know, cesspools and, you know, everything else, it doesn't matter.
Not like we want to, we're doing cesspools, but, um, we're trying to address the floodplain issues, the stormwater issues. Uh, it's gonna take more than sewering, uh, you all know that. It's gonna take more than oysters.
Yeah, no, I.
So, we're trying to address.
Get them in a.
Yes.
So, in that, and again, that's what the, the hundred thousand dollars is a request for, so they can specifically look at stormwater?
To, to assess.
Okay.
I feel as though it's money well spent. I mean, we gotta develop a plan, see where we're lacking, see where there needs to be.
Right.
Additional stormwater, so, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is too much to ask, uh, towards some initiative.
I don't know if it's enough.
Yeah. It's a start.
Absolutely.
And it was not an, an amount that we were comfortable with out of our own consulting line item. I mean, we've got a little flexibility, but not that much.
I make a motion to, uh, approve and recommend.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, absolutely agree.
And, and some of that will be reimbursed.
Uh, page, page twelve, article, um, to see if the town will vote to increase the weekly hours of the library's circulation supervisor position from thirty-four point five hours per week to thirty-seven point five hours per week. The position is already budgeted and eligible for full health insurance and pension benefits for the current fiscal year, and does not result in the creation of new position or incur additional benefit costs. The salary for the position would increase overall by five thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents for the fiscal year, but no additional funding is requested.
I just wanna, uh, make it crystal clear, Mr. Chair, that this is not creating a new position as you just mentioned, and also, this is already a benefited position. Uh, once you exceed the, I think it's nineteen and a half hours, it's a benefited position. So, the only thing that we're adding is the cost for the additional hours that's being requested.
I think if, you know, the library feels justification to, um, keep the hours open a little longer and on Saturdays, that's a great thing that folks are reading, and, you know, I think we should support it.
I make a motion to support. And recommend.
Hearing of first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Again, uh, remaining on page twelve, to see if the town will vote to approve additions to the waterways regulations, uh, chapter one seventy, to prohibit the use of motorboats with, within Santuit Pond, to limit potential disturbance and resuspension of sediment into the water column to preserve water quality in the pond that will support other forms of recreation and be protective of public health and safety. Ashley, if you wouldn't mind coming and speaking.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just want some background, um, for the article. This is a recommendation, as you know, the town has awarded, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to look into improving water quality for Santuit Pond. This is state-funded through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Um, as part of that grant process, Fosse and O'Neill, our consultants, did review, um, existing town bylaws and, um, what can be done to improve the water quality on Santuit Pond itself. Um, one of the recommendations that they felt needed to happen in, in order to do something for Santuit Pond was to restrict, uh, motorized vessels on the pond. The pond is too shallow to support any size of horsepower. Um, I don't know if all of you know, but the, the maximum depth of Santuit Pond is ten feet, and that's at the deepest point. And I did include a little chart within my, um, recommendations, but it, it's just fed in that those horsepowers based on depth, you're ressuspending the entire bottom. Uh, we just recently did a drone shot of the pond, and we had a ninety horsepower motor going through the pond. It's ressuspending everything in its path. So, you're almost, you know, those solar bees are useless when you're ressuspending the entire bottom with a motorboat being put into the pond.
How many people use the pond?
Um, it's relatively low. I've never seen more than six trailers there, and that's usually during a bath, bass tournament, where they're going out and, and fishing. But again, it's not advised to even consume the fish that are fished from that pond. Um, it's entirely recreation and a trophy prize.
So, would they, Mr. Chair, you have a mind?
Yes.
So, um, so, Ash, I, I live in Santuit Woods, so, Santuit Pond, I've, since I've moved here, it was, it's been dirty water, and it's gotten worse. I don't see many boats out there at all. I don't know if this is a, it's a big deal. I mean, are you saying, so that would include, like, if they do, once or twice a year, they do tournaments, that would be no-go for them as well?
Correct.
Not that I, I, I'm not even a fisherman, so I, I don't really care, to be honest with you. But I just, is this because it, the boats stir up everything?
They're ressuspending phosphorus-laden sediment into the water column, which only proliferates the cyanobacteria blooms.
See, 'cause I always, always, always thought that the stirring it up was, 'cause you have stagnant water, so it sits. And if it sits long enough, it just, it smells, it, it turns bad, it gets worse. So, if, if it's stagnant, that's not the case?
No, the solar bees are oxygenating, that's their purpose. So, you, we, we have these solar bees deployed, and what they're doing is they're oxygenating the bottom, keeping oxygen at the bottom. When we have anoxic conditions outside of having those solar bees, that's when you see phosphorus release from the sediment. So, when something's going through and stirring up the bottom, everything's coming to the surface, and the phosphorus is being released.
So, you're losing the oxygen that you just put in?
It's nothing to do with oxygen when you're taking a motorboat in. It's, it's all about supplying oxygen to the bottom waters with the solar bees to prevent the phosphorus from resuspending. Um, the consultants felt like this would be the thing that the town can do now outside of sewering. This will solve part of the problem. It's not, in comparison to sewering, it's negligible, but it, it's definitely required.
And once, once, once you go through and stir up everything from the bottom, how long does? long does it, the phosphorus remain in the water column?
I mean, it depends on settling rate, it just depends on grain size. Very fine sediments we're seeing, which isn't even sediment, it's algal flock, it's past algae blooms that have settled to the bottom, so it's very fine, so it has a higher re-suspension time than a, a higher grain size. So, it'll stay in longer than a sand particle.
Day, a day, weeks?
I mean, it's usually hours, but...
Hours.
More so than a sand particle. So, higher grain size, when you look at it, it's like pinpoint of a pencil versus microscopic.
I mean, for me, you know, it's based on the professional, the people with this professional expertise, it is a recommendation, you know, there's, there's a lot that we need to do. It's a small step, there's other ponds for folks to do bass fishing tournaments, and, you know, bass, fishing, you can't eat the bass in any of the ponds, to my knowledge, per the state website, they're so loaded with mercury, but, you know, I feel like, you know, this remains a nice pond to be able to canoe and paddle things that are manually powered. I just don't see any justification that would support not supporting this...
No, I mean...
Based on the condition, present condition of the pond.
I make a motion to support and recommend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes.
Hopefully, we can, to accommodate where we can reverse that.
Hopefully, that's the goal. Moving on to page 13, to see if the town will vote to adopt changes to the mooring regulations, section, to be deter, I'm not sure, there's no number there, relative to fees as set forth below. One, mooring permit invoices will be sent out each year for the current year after January 1st via email or mail. Number two, mooring permit renewal payments must be received on or before March 15th of the calendar year to which the permit relates. Subsection A, mooring renewals received after March 15th, March 16th through March 31st will be subject to a late fee charge of $50 in addition to the applicable mooring permit fee. An additional invoice for said late fee charge will be sent out via email or mail. Subsection B, any mooring permit relative to which the renewal fee is not paid in full by March 31st will be revoked due to non-payment of the current year's fee. Subsection C, permit renewal and late fees, fee invoices and slash notices are issued by the town as a courtesy only. Non-receivable annual mooring permit invoice is not a basis or justification for late payments or non-payment of fees or take any other actions related thereto.
Kinda says what it says.
Yeah, this one's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing that I ask that the board consider is recommendations from the Waterways Commission to increase that fee to $100.
And that amended?
Yes, that was a recommendation from the Waterways Commission.
A motion to...
So, you talk, so on this, this 50 would become 100?
It would be 100, $100 to the late fee.
On this article?
Yes.
If you accepted the commission's recommendation, yeah.
A motion to support and recommend.
I'll second.
As amended.
As amended with $100.
As amended, $100.
So, Carol makes the motion, and Tom seconds. Hearing of first and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Bottom of page 13, to see if the town will vote to approve the following additions and modifications to the wetlands bylaw under Chapter 172. Would you want to speak to this?
Yes, this was another article that was recommended by Fosun O'Neal to protect for clean water. I will just say, we did meet with some of the department heads and just to stay consistent across the board, performance standards in Section C, 172, that proposed Section C, the following activities in VAE, flood zones are prohibited, new construction, new structures, new and expanded coastal engineering structures unless of loose slope stones, design impermeal paving or roads, driveways or parking lots, new or expanded septic foundations or other open pilings. This will be redacted to go in line with what Evan is proposing for the FEMA flood insurance, and that's not to say we can't come back to the board at a future date and propose this. And I'm gonna let Drew speak to the other changes under the wetlands, because it's under his jurisdiction, even though it was a DNR article submitted.
So, for the record, Drew McManus, Town of Mashpee Conservation Agent and Herring Warden and Tree Warden. I'll start with the, the proposed change in the buffer zone, increase in the buffer zone under Chapter 172, so currently the buffer zone to any wetland resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act as identified in Section, Chapter 172-1 and -2. It's currently 100 feet, so the proposal is to increase that to 150 feet. The main motivation here in increasing this buffer zone is, I'll go back and just explain how the buffer zone works under the local bylaw. Generally speaking, and for, I'll start out with the example of an undeveloped lot, the first 50 feet is considered to be absolutely no touch in terms of development, with the exception of a pathway to access the water or wetland, and limited pruning and cutting to achieve some sort of view to the water. So, those are the only activities that are allowed for an undeveloped lot in the first 0 to 50 feet. The 50 to 100 is more open to development, but still subject to CONCOM jurisdiction. So, with this change, with this increase from 100 to 150 feet, that minimum buffer zone width of 50 feet will be increased to 75 feet. And again, there are allowable activities within that buffer zone that I just mentioned, that being vista pruning and accessway to the water. The commission also, if lot sizes, if these sorts of buffer zones may impact the other setbacks such as septic system, or, you know, zoning setbacks, or things of that nature, those hardships can be brought before the commission for consideration. So, if we're looking to increase the buffer zone to 150 feet, and that places a hardship on a lot as far as its developability, that can be taken into consideration. But there are criteria that need to be met. It's a waiver, basically, of standards, similar to a variance under zoning.
So, everyone would have to come in and ask for a variance?
If, if they, if it were to be restrictive in that way, not just because they want to get that close to the water, they would have to, you know, produce compelling evidence.
What about pre-existing?
So, pre-existing, it would increase the buffer zone still, but you, you would still essentially be grandfathered into place. It's not going to push things back another 75 feet, but what it will allow the commission, will empower the commission to do is to expand or create a buffer zone where either one is minimal, like less than 50 feet, maybe less than 20 feet, to expand that out to a larger buffer zone through mitigation practice requirements, so compensatory planting. I mean, to be totally honest, the 50-foot buffer zone is minimal in terms of nutrient abatement, nutrient loading and uptake, and wildlife habitat, it's the minimum. You really ideally want to have an 100-foot buffer zone of no disturbance if you really want to make a difference in terms of nutrient uptake and wildlife habitat and storm damage prevention. 100 feet is meaningful, 50 feet is a compromise at best. So, what we're asking for is 75 feet and a total of 150, which in my mind is a minor increase considering what you're getting in return. So, that's, that's part of the bylaw requests, the change that we're requesting in this article. I can stop there if anyone has any questions, and I could move on to the other regulatory changes.
I know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of back and forth, so, so, just for, just try to keep, simplify this whole situation. So, you're looking at going from 50 to 75 feet as far as a no-touch?
Yes, well, if, for an undeveloped lot.
Undeveloped, right. Existing, pre-existing, I get it, they're there, they're not gonna, gonna uproot what they have. And then you're looking at going from 100 to 150 feet?
As far as overall jurisdiction.
Overall.
Right.
And you say jurisdiction, so, I'm curious, other, other, is there precedence with other towns on the Cape that have a buffer of 150?
I think there are.
Or is everyone just at a 100, or I have, again, this is all...
I think the example, there are other towns, I don't, I don't know if there were...
Because there are other, other towns in Massachusetts, decline, Dover, Watertown...
What about on the Cape?
Not on the Cape.
Not on the Cape.
None on the Cape.
Nope. Which is surprising, because this is where it would be most useful.
And again, I totally get it. My other question is, so, now, where's, like, we talked about, like, fertilizer part of...
Yes.
Wiener's fertilizer play into, like, the 50 to 75, and then up to the 150? If you can expand on that part a little bit.
So, the, yeah, the fertilizer, so the language that's proposed, 172 restrictions, Section A, application of fertilizer containing nitrogen, or phosphorus is prohibited within the resource areas protected by this bylaw, so that means the buffer zone as well when we say resource areas. However, I think there needs to be some exceptions to this, because the amount of mitigation that the commission requires based on a particular project, compensatory planting, is going to require some level of startup fertilizer just to get that going. So, I think there needs to be exceptions built into this that just are practical and make sense, garden beds, for instance, but as far as turf lawn, I think that's what really this is geared towards. So, I think that that, the description under restrictions just needs some additional wording, to, like, an exception section, to allow for some fertilizer application, organic in variety. It's similar to what we have already under our Lawn Standards Regulation, which is, you know, it's reduced to a certain amount over a certain square footage, it's all calculated out, it's organic variety, those sorts of things, and we can pluck that language right out of our lawn standards and just insert it into this section as a similar type of exceptions.
We're gonna need to have that in these.
And I will supply that, yeah.
So, whatever those suggested modification, you could have those before our next meeting, so at least we could consider the full impact?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, so, if... How, so you're still, you're still solo, correct?
Yes.
So, if we were to adopt this, I'm guessing you'd be a very busy person.
I would, yes. There's no question.
I, I'm just, you know, I'm looking at the new, I mean, that's a major undertaking, and...
Well, when you consider the remaining undeveloped parcels that are within wetlands jurisdiction, it's not really a huge undertaking, which is where the full teeth of this would come into play.
How many undeveloped properties?
I don't have the number. Within wetlands jurisdiction, I'm not sure, but that also includes the flood zone, so it could be, you know, a relatively high number. But from my experience, and yes, I am very busy, but it's manageable, I don't have any reservations about this increase in terms of enforceability, and we do have another staff member eventually coming on board as the assistant agent.
Help is on the way.
So, it's been posted. We get cooperation from other departments like building, Board of Health, DNR, so we have a lot of ears, eyes and ears out there. So, I feel confident that this won't be something in vain, or that won't be enforceable. It will. I'll make sure it will be. We all will.
And the last, the last thing, and I'll let other people ask questions too, but how would you go about enforcement of the fertilizer? How would that, I, I'm just curious about, how do you enact, okay, you're within 150 feet, and you're looking at the floodplain, looking at Mashpee, you're talking the rivers, there's floodplain around the rivers, I believe, and never mind, you know, along the coast, how, how is that, I don't know how that's...
With all due respect, I don't know that we want to be disclosing publicly our enforcement strategies or potential weaknesses. So, I would love to have a conversation with you offline, but I don't want potential violators to say, well, this is how we get around it.
I know, I know we have some beautiful homes on facing the water, and they want to have beautiful green lawns looking out over the ocean and the water. How do we transform them into using something else instead of fertilizer? I mean, we're gonna have to educate an awful lot of people to use organic, and then do you tell...
It starts with really, I mean, that's a good question. It's really education about the type of lawn seed and species that are adapted to this environment, and the myth that a green lawn is a healthy lawn. Lawns go dormant during drought, you're gonna have to get used to that, or go with zero-scaping and don't have a lawn at all and have just native shrubbery and trees, native landscape as your landscape scheme, maybe a smaller area of lawn, you know, less than a couple hundred square feet, you know, to recreate on. And again, that would be a variety and species that's conducive to this climate. So, I think that really just centers on education, and I would be happy to work on a, you know, a flyer that we can get out to people, like, Falmouth has their Friendly Lawn Initiative, that's been a big success in Falmouth in terms of educating the public on, you know, what constitutes a healthy lawn, encouraging minimal lawn space and more zero-scaping, things like that. So, it's really just gonna center on public education and outreach.
Aside, aside from, you know, the both of you and your respective departments, have others participated in developing these regulatory changes, and were they advised to any of the consultants that are paid by the town?
Sorry, can you, so is other, any other town does this?
Any other departments have, have there been any other departments or programs that have collaborated with you on putting forth these recommendations?
Yes.
And then, were the recommendations based on advice of third-party consultants of the town?
Yes, and, and we are working with Fosun O'Neal again for the MVP round, the second round, we were funded, and they are more than willing to come and educate the public. There are towns that are moving forward on the Cape for fertilizer ban entirely, and that is the town of Orleans and Nantucket. So, this is still working with the general public, still allowing them to do something, it's just limiting their amount, because it is contributing to poor water quality.
So, these, these recommendations are all provided, you know, with a unified effort on everyone involved with addressing our water quality issues throughout the town?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also noticed that in the performance standards, you have no new bulkheads, seawalls, or coastal engineering structures that shall be permitted within the 150 feet of a coastal bank. Is that something that if someone wants to have one, you would consider it, give a variance, or is this a complete no?
Where are you seeing this, this?
Page 17.
Bottom of 17.
Bottom of 17, under your performance standard.
So, that's Section C, that's, that's the area that we're redacting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you're redacting that.
Just, just to follow up on that, Mass DEP and the Wetlands Protection Act absolutely prohibits...
Okay.
...the armoring of coastal banks for post-1978 development, so you cannot, under any circumstances, armor your bank if you develop a lot after August 17th of 1978. That's the cutoff, that's the year the Wetlands Protection Act was promulgated with the coastal bank standards, so that, that can't be changed.
Well, how many lots do you think would be non-buildable with these changes? Existing lots, how many become non-buildable?
Well, it wouldn't affect the lots within the flood zone, because the, under the bylaw, the Chapter 172 bylaw, the flood zone doesn't have a buffer zone. So, this 150-foot buffer zone, nor the existing 100-foot buffer zone, neither apply to lots within the flood zone, so any of those lots within the 100-year floodplain would be unaffected by this change, because there is no... because there is no buffer zone to flood zone. Outside of that, it's gotta be a relative handful, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but...
What's, what's your handful, is that five?
Uh...
Or is it 100?
I would say probably less than 50. I don't, I don't know, off the top of my head, I'm just...
I mean, that's my concern, I mean, I, I understand the benefits of the environment, but we're talking landowners that may have been sitting on this land for a while, and now they choose to build, and it's maybe too late.
Right.
And, and that's where my concern is, for the residents of the, of the town. We have all of these homes that are already existing, and the environment seems to be surviving, with new adjustments in, you know, fertilization, and, and all of these restrictions on, on fertilizer, and wastewater treatment systems that we're putting in to protect the environment, now we're gonna take away the, the right to build, when we finally have a, a potential of a wastewater treatment plant moving in, so that people will not be spoiling the, the wetlands, the environment.
Well...
I just think it's, it would, would jump on the gun, I think they can do the same thing and make those lots buildable, keep them...
I think, I think it's not really, I mean, you're viewing it as, as, you know, taking away the buildability, buildability of a lot that would normally be, you know, allowed to be developed, I, I view this as really kind of gaining more control over supersized McMansions on these lots, and landscaping and hardscaping everywhere, and trying to shrink that down to what is reasonable. And you say the environment is, you know, with, holding up all this, I don't see it that way, I see the environment suffering.
I'm not saying it's holding up, but that's what the intent of the wastewater treatment plant is.
Sure.
And we're spending millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars
Sure.
to put this system in, not to take someone's house away, or the, the buildable rights to that property.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, I don't really see this as threatening the buildability, buildability of a lot, I see it as kind of minimizing development on a lot, to what is reasonable. And like I said, there are, you know, provisions, there are considerations the CONCON can look at in terms of hardships, if, you know, if you're looking at this 150-foot buffer zone, 75-foot area of no disturbance on an unbuildable lot, and in order to make it buildable, they need another 10, 15, 20 feet, is it reasonable, you know, is there compelling, is there evidence of compelling need, demonstration of compelling need, to incur, you know, incur into that buffer zone, that's something the commission can look at, so it's not a hard and fast, iron-fisted, etched-in-stone type of situation. Those situations can be looked at. Also, it's important to point out that riverfront carries a 200-foot buffer zone, currently, right now, always has. The first 100 feet on an undeveloped, on a non-developed, buildable lot is absolutely no touch, nothing you can do about those homes, that's in place already. And in some areas where the 50-foot buffer zone may render a lot unbuildable because it's rare species habitat, so you could have some lots that fall under that, that category right now. So, take that into consideration too, as far as what the balance is of buildable lots left, some of them are already unbuildable because of, they may be in riverfront, they may be in rare species habitat.
Yeah, I don't know what variances might be allowed for those, I'm not quite certain as to the buildability, you know, some of them have restrictions, that doesn't mean they can't be granted a variance.
Right.
So, just like you were talking that you can't create variances, so, I, I mean, I just, I think that the land is too valuable, from, from my point of view, some of these people have been sitting on this land for years, waiting for their retirement home, and now that may not happen, or it would jeopardize the size of the prop, the house or the building. I just have a lot of questions, I mean, and like I say, and at the same time, we're spending all of this money on this wastewater treatment plants and designs to protect the environment, so not to stop from building or welcoming people to come down here and, and, and live in a beautiful place.
Sure.
And with their help, with their, their tax dollars, it'll create a healthier environment, I have to believe, in the long run.
So, I, I mean, for, for me personally, you know, I couldn't disagree more, you know, we, we're at a position where the environment's screaming, as was stated earlier, that, you know, it can't handle the amount of build-out that we've been doing, we can't maintain the current pace, that's proven totally compromising of our water quality in, in all areas, our rivers have been identified as the most contaminated on Cape Cod, our, Brian Howes comes in annually and tells us how, how terrible Papua New Guinea Bay watershed and, and the Walkway Bay watershed are doing, they're becoming eutrophic, at some point, you have to, you know, repetitively going through the same, not learning from your mistakes, I mean, that's like the definition of stupid, you know, to, to keep continuing doing the same practice, you know, and, and looking for a different result. The water, the water quality is, is important, how do you keep assessing your homes, the people that live on the water, keep assessing the value going up and up and up, when your water quality's going down and down and down? You know, it smells like sewer in, in, in some people's backyards, so at some point, it's gonna hit a breaking point, when nobody's gonna want to live in the houses that you have built now. So, you know, to preserve and protect people's right to build, I can appreciate that, but at the end of the day, you know, we have to take corrective measures now, this is something we can do immediately, and, you know, it, it's not a big cost on the town, you know, to do it, so it's gonna take years to get the wastewater up and running, to where it starts doing corrective actions, and, and making an impact to clean the actual bays, or the ponds or the rivers, so, you know, we have to take, you know, we're in a dire situation to preserve and protect everything that we love here in Mashpee, and the quality of life for all residents, you know, in and around Mashpee, you know, for folks that have just been sitting on land, waiting for the market to be just right, when they start to build, you know, that, I'm not as concerned for them as I'm concerned for the people that swim in the bays and, and, and go out and clog, and, and do shell fishing, and, you know, eat fish in the bays, and canoe and kayak, you know, I'm more concerned for those residents.
Kind of, yeah. The environment's, it, it, without, without doubt, without a question, the environment is, is what's important to this community, we all, we live here because of the environment.
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't see what you see, I don't, I don't smell anything at, at the water's edge, other than a, a salt, you know, salt water, but I don't, I don't, I go, and I'm, by the, the Mashpee River, there's, it hasn't been that bad this year, and I'm not suggesting it's getting better, it hasn't been this bad.
By, by what standard, though? Brian Howes comes in and tells us...
Than last year.
They're the two most contaminated rivers on Cape Cod, both Quasana and Mashpee Rivers, so I, I don't know what, by what standard you're measuring it's not that bad, I, I don't understand the lot.
I'm saying is, I don't think it's time to pull the plug on these lots that people have owned for over the years, I'm not saying you can't put a moratorium on if, if there aren't construction or something at this stage, but to change the zoning and the setback and the, the lot size, it just seems, it just doesn't seem right.
And at the end of the day, there's, you know, this has all been compiled by the professionals with the special expertise, that we've delegated the responsibility addressing the, these dire issues, we've, we've tasked these people with this job, they're bringing forth recommendations with their collective professional experience, and we as a board are gonna shoot it down with, you know, the only thing I've, I've ever known to pass with a unanimous decision was the wastewater policy, you know, that we, the regulations that we passed, I mean, the investment in wastewater, and so, you have the town's support, but we as a board are, as the gatekeepers, are gonna prevent improving water quality, that's my understanding that, that, you know, we're supposed to do that.
By eliminating homes.
Not, there's no, no, no elimination of homes, you know, you've heard Mr. McManus explain that it's not denying buildability of the lots, it's not that, it's just a minimal, and, and it's minimal, this isn't even as far as you could go, you know, a full-on, full-out moratorium on development would be denying buildability, this is a compromise, and it's not even a, a big ask, where, as Mr. McManus stated, you know, the rivers have a 200-foot boundary, phosphorus travels up to 300 feet, so you're not even encompassing the full 300 feet of, that phosphorus travels by having a 75-foot and 150-foot buffer, you're not, this is minimal, minimal, minimal ask, and I think we as a board need to approve it, and let it go before town meeting, and let the, let the citizens of the town decide whether or not they're willing to live with it, we as, we should not be as gatekeepers preventing something that's minimal in nature, and coming at the full recommendation of all the professional people, we're spending town resources to pay, to do, to address this, we should not be gatekeepers and just keep it from getting to town meeting, that's, that's wrong.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
So, Drew, can you just explain a little bit more, you mentioned, I had my, you started talking about the 200-foot buffer, and I just had it on my notes as my question, but can you just clarify what it is now, and what is proposed, because I do see 150, I see 200 around rivers?
Right.
What does that mean, and is it around rivers, is it different than the coast, if you will?
Yeah.
Just how does it...
The Rivers Act provides a 200-foot, what they define as riverfront, not even a buffer zone, it's just a zone of jurisdiction around what they consider to be, you know, the sensitive areas of, of riverfront, so the actual river channel itself, and then the buffer zone, if you will, they don't refer to it as a buffer zone under the state Wetlands Protection Act.
Okay.
Nor is it referred to like that under the wetland bylaw, it's just a 200-foot zone of jurisdiction surrounding the rivers. This is really for all other wetland resource areas, and as I explained before, it doesn't apply to the flood zone, the flood zone does not have a buffer zone under the bylaw, so the flood zone is just the flood zone, wherever you see it meet the flood zone X from AV or AE, there is no buffer zone that extends out from there under, under the bylaw, nor is this proposing any. So, it's marshes, it's salt marsh, watering vegetative wetland, freshwater, swabs, those, you know, we typically characterize as wetlands, coastal banks, inland banks, dunes, coastal beaches, those sorts of areas is where we would expand the current 100-foot setback to 150. And, in my opinion, what, what this would allow, what the, what I consider to be the greatest benefit of doing this, is to, in these areas that really have little to no buffer zone at all, and you've just got high-maintenance turf going right from the back of the patio pool area up to the edge of the, of the water, this allows for a greater degree of enhancing, creating those buffer zones to a larger width, because like I said, the 50-foot is the minimum, so we're not even asking for the, you know, like you said, David, the 300 feet, this is, this is a relatively small compromise, and I see that as the greatest benefit, I don't see that this is targeting lots to become undevelopable, I see this as an opportunity to expand or create buffer zones to a larger degree, where they are either severely diminished or simply don't exist at all, which is in a lot of areas of town, a lot, and I, so I see this will create a, you know, an exceptional environmental benefit, net environmental benefit, by creating these, requiring these buffer zones to be created where there are none or they're diminished, and that will really help to reduce the nutrient loading, to increase storm damage resiliency. So, it's, it's really just a benefit, not only, you know, if you're conservation-minded, but if you're a homeowner as well, to protect your property from storm damage, to protect the water quality that your property borders, you know, whatever water body you happen to border, you're doing your part to improve that water quality, and that's what this is really geared towards.
So, just to, I, I get, but it, it does reference, you know, rivers, and, because, I'm, just so you know, David, I'm not totally against all this, I know you mentioned, you know, I, I get it, and I understand, I, I'm still not clear on, it mentions rivers 200 feet, how, so, is there no effect on the rivers?
The rivers are still 200 feet.
On all these articles, that references it?
We're not tagging on another 150 feet to the 200-foot river.
No change to the, the 200 feet is already there?
It's already there.
Okay, it just, if you read it, it references 200 feet around rivers.
Right.
So, I don't know if that's changing, or that's, that's the same it's already, always been. Is there any difference as far as what people can do, or as far as if it was fertilizer, up and around rivers, if we're talking about it along, you know, along the shore, I assume that involves, it's gonna be the same discussion as far as around rivers, or no, or I'm not sure?
I'm not quite, can you restate the, I'm just not quite...
Yeah, so as far as relates to fertilizer, right, we're talking about, we're concerned about, on the coast, you know, concern of fertilizer running off into the waters, right? Is that same buffer concern around the rivers?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that would be?
Phosphorus is, I mean, you have both phosphorus and nitrogen in fertilizers, so I mean, everywhere you're fertilizing, you're essentially compounding the existing problem that we've heard from all the different reports we've heard over the past couple of years, that everybody comes in here, keeps talking about, you know, your, your runoff in stormwater and fertilizer, running off of lawns is one of the biggest contributors to the diminishing water quality, I mean, we've all heard it several, several times, every presentation that comes through here has, has, has stated that.
You're, you're stating exactly, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, my concern is, because you said that this doesn't changing anything, this isn't changing anything with the rivers.
No, because the rivers already carry a 100-foot buffer zone of, it's called the inner riparian zone, which, you know, if you have an undeveloped lot...
If we're gonna protect our shores, I want to make sure we're protecting our rivers as well, that's...
Yeah.
You don't, you didn't, you ran me the wrong way on that one.
The rivers have a bit more protection, existing protections, whereas bays, ponds, some of the other water bodies don't, so this is trying to...
This is trying to catch up to...
Catch up to where the riparian environment is.
Getting closer to the standards of protection for riverfront.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, that's, if you want to look at it kind of like that way, it's, it's increasing the standard of protection for these resource areas, because riverfront is considered by the state and, and, you know, under our local bylaw, to be far and away the, one of the more sensitive and important resource areas to protect, so trying to get other wetlands closer to that level of protection, you know, you could look at it conceptually like that, it's not quite insane.
And even that's not enough.
And it's not enough, I mean, it's...
Because the phosphorus is known to travel 300 feet, so why not have a 300-foot buffer, but, you know, it's always a compromise on the short, short end of nature.
I think we all agree that we need to do something else other than just sewer-ing, and, and this is a start, no question, but I think what, what we're trying to present to the people of Mashpee is to try to understand what the article really says, and what you can and cannot do, and that's why John and Tom and David and I are all asking questions.
Sure.
Because we're getting questions from residents, and there's a lot here, there's a, a lot of material to understand.
Sure.
And we want them to be able to understand when we go to town meeting, what we're hearing and what they hear, so I think it's, it's a learning process for everybody here.
Yeah, it's a lot to unpack, because
It is.
the 100, the 100-foot buffer zone is reflected in every single regulation under the bylaw, so that's why you see all the pages where you have to change 100 to 150.
Right.
And each one of those regulations dealing with a specific resource area like coastal beach, coastal dune, coastal bank, freshwater wetland, so on and so forth, each one of them in the regulations has a specific performance standard, that standard won't change, the only thing that's changing is that zone of jurisdiction.
Okay.
But the standard language, the performance standards, which is basically a term that describes what does this resource area do in its natural function, what are the benefits of it, those are the performance standards, and each and every regulation has a section entitled performance standards. Those will remain unchanged, and, and it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to read through, it's a lot to explain, so I get that, you know, there's a lot of unpacking to do. We try to do our best, you know, in working with people before they even get to the commission, these are the regulations that apply to your particular property, these are the standards, so we try to be as transparent and helpful in terms of educating, so they don't waste time spending all this money preparing plans before understanding fully, you know, what the jurisdiction is. And we do that a lot, because conservation and wetlands, you know, in all honesty, is probably the least-known jurisdictional entity in town, or any town, compared to like Board of Health or Building, those are well-known sets of regulations, people are aware of. Conservation of wetlands is kind of, you know, less known, lesser known, so it takes a lot of explaining, but we do, you know, do our best to try and educate and not waste people's time, be very upfront and transparent with all of this, so...
Thank you.
It's a lot, it's a lot of work.
I, I've heard enough, I think you made a very compelling argument to support it, and so...
Well, they're making amendments, they made amendments to the article.
We need amendments in a couple weeks from Drew.
So, they'll bring it... So they'll bring it for us.
So we can't.
Oh, so we can't take a vote on it?
No.
All right. I missed that one.
So we'll hold.
So a motion to hold to the September 12th meeting?
And we'll get the information out to the board in advance of your next meeting so you're not coming in here.
Right.
On the 12th, seeing it for the first time.
First time, thank you.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
So I was.
Change the amendments from the president.
Second, the motion to hold.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of holding this article?
Yes.
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Bringing us to Article on page 24. If I'm not mistaken. To see if the town will vote to approve the following additions to the Use of Waterways Bylaw, Chapter 170.
Page 21.
Is it another one?
21.
The nitrogen control bylaws.
These pages were so many.
Oh, my apologies. To see if the town will vote to approve the following additions and changes to the Nitrogen Control Bylaw, Chapter 107 of the Mashpee Town Bylaws. Chapter 107 Nutrient Control Bylaws. Do you want to explain this?
So this was an article that we thought collectively will be postponed until the May town meeting so we can talk about logistics and enforcement and interdepartmental cooperation between different committees and everything. Make sure we're consistent across the board.
Got you.
Okay.
Withdraw.
24, yep.
Do we have a motion to withdraw?
Make a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Having a first and second, a motion to withdraw that particular article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. So that brings us to page 24. To see if the town will vote to approve the following additions to the Use of the Waterways Bylaw, Chapter 170. All vessels when operating must follow the rules of the road. Violation $50. Two, operation of a vessel in a negligent manner that would endanger any person. Violation $100. The following may be considered negligent operation. A, jumping the wake of another vessel. B, following vessel too closely that is towing a person on any water support device. C, weaving through congested waterway traffic at speed. D, intentionally operating a vessel in such a violent manner that the operator and/or passenger are thrown into the water. E, operating at speed with passengers sitting on the bow or gunwales. Three, operation of a PWC with a modified exhaust system. Violation $100. This mirrors 323 Code of Mass Regulations, 4.03 subsection B 08.
I don't think anybody would argue with a violation amongst.
I have, I have one if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. So I'm assuming, because again, we look at the fines, $50, $100. Is this Mass General Law, this is, is this the highest? I mean, we charge 50, more than $50?
And do we, do we get, do you charge? Do we write tickets for these?
Yes, we can. We currently cannot write tickets for these. So these are what's, we could write state violations for these tickets. But to be carried over from Mashpee Town Bylaw, which are definitely easier for my department to enforce, we would like them to be moved and carried over to the bylaws. And as you all know, the state of Massachusetts, there's no requirement for boating. You do not need a boating license. Anybody can go buy a boat and drive a boat. And the rules of the road violation is necessary. It's minimum because of educational purposes. We do not want it to be high. So that one was $50. The other one, as far as negligent operation and the modification of a personal watercraft, those need to be a little bit higher because they know what they're doing when it comes to those things. And I think that that is a good amount. We could go higher, but I think the limit is $300.
Why don't we go to the $300?
Again, I'm not, I'm definitely in favor of giving you the, you know, but I, I just, I think we've talked about this and parking and everything else. I just think, I mean, you know, money is, you know, $50, $100 is not.
That's a nice weekend.
And if people are abusing, that's, we're talking about safety. This is safe, when it comes down to safety, we talk about the town manager. Number one is safety. You can't trump a month's safety. So I, you know, so if, but again, I know we can only go to Mass General Law. We can't go over that, but so.
There are certain amounts that.
Would, would the 300 apply in place of where you have 100 at item two and also item three?
I believe it can, I can check into that and get back.
I mean, I'd be in favor of increasing.
Of all three.
Whatever you can do to increase those fines.
I knew that there were some bylaws that we could adjust, and then there were a couple situations where we couldn't, according to council. On this particular bylaw, if we can go to 300, then that's what I would suggest.
But we're in, we're in agreement that the initial one, you know, operating must follow the rules of the road, violation $50, which is kind of a minimum, just a lot of people are going to probably get cited for that because they don't know, lack of awareness. But the other ones are more severe.
Right.
And warrant the $300.
I think that's what, you know, the guy actually just said is like, it's more of like a, now we can educate them on, but then the other ones are more severe. So I'd make a motion to hold with the recommendation of coming back in a couple of weeks from Ashley as far as what we could modify those fines to be.
Could you do a step system, if you, first offense, second offense, third offense?
We, we could do something like that.
And that would be, I think it would be more reasonable.
I think that would be reasonable as a first offense, but you know, that also.
That sounds fair.
All right, you get the point. We have it with any recommendation?
Amend your recommendation.
Yeah.
If you could take the advice that Tom put forward, implementing structured tiered approach to the violations, that, that would be, I think, the consensus.
I'll second that motion.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye, yes.
Yes. So we're, look forward to those amendments.
Recommendations.
We're almost done.
Moving on to page 25. To see if the town will vote to reserve from the fiscal year 2023 estimated community preservation revenues pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6, the following amounts. 147,000, 157,445 in the areas of 10% for historic purposes, 10% for affordable housing purposes, 10% for open space purposes, and 1,062,107 to the fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Hearing the first and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. To see, page 26. To see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Chickadee Road, Debbie Lane, Manitoba Road, Metacomet Road, Nahoyden Road, Neshoba Road, Pontiac Road, Sammasek Road, Wamisit Road, Whipper Will Circle, and Will's Work Road. And to accomplish said purpose and for expenses related thereto, the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, $80,000 to the South Cape Homeowners Association Roadways Account or take any other action related thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
One item I see is the Will's Work Road. That's on state property, isn't that? Isn't that part of the conservation area down, the state?
It is a portion of it.
So this would only be within the limits of?
As I recall.
Got you.
Yes.
Okay. Having a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Is that the last one?
Yep.
All righty. Continuing on with the old business. Discussion approval of adding articles to the warrant ever source easement funding wastewater consultant.
That's blue star, right?
No, no, this is.
No.
Oh, that's the other one.
A wastewater professional technical.
This is, you're, you're looking at the first one, correct?
Say again?
You're looking at the transfer funds for the wastewater consultant?
It's in the, this memorandum.
Right.
Correct.
That's just to keep Ray Jack going.
And we need to put that on as an article? A motion to approve.
A motion to add is what we need.
A motion, okay.
And a motion to approve is what we recommend.
A motion to add and a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? And did you want to specify the dollar off?
$150,000.
Okay.
So it's a motion to add.
Add.
Motion to recommend.
Recommend.
Yes.
And approve. So it's all three?
All three.
I second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. For the record, Tom stepped out, like, so was not present for this vote.
But that's three, nothing, right?
Three.
Yes. That motion passes.
And then we need to add the easement one?
Yes. It's the same thing that we would, would recommend. Recommend adding it, then approving it.
Then approving it, okay.
Motion.
And recommend.
We do it.
So a motion to add easement for.
And recommend.
And add, recommend, and, no, it's add.
Add the easement to EverSource Energy.
Right. Then it's.
Recommend.
Recommend and approve.
And approve.
Approve.
All three.
All three. You second?
I second.
Having a first and second, we have a motion to recommend and approve the easement for the EverSource layout.
Absolutely, yes.
Having a first and second, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Additional topics. We've already taken care of that. Wayne, you're satisfied that there's no additional topics?
We just have some that were brought in by Evan on these articles. So I'll pass them out to you and then Evan can explain what's going on. Thank you.
You want these added, should they?
Yes, possibly.
Possibly.
Should I jump in?
Sure, you want to?
It's been my understanding that I suppose two meetings go for you now. The DNR director made a presentation and the question was posed about what additional measures we could be taking to address water quality challenges in both our, you know, surface water, estuaries, bays, rivers, et cetera. And the town manager thereafter convened a, a meeting of, of some department heads, planning board members, additional appointed and elected officials for the purposes of discussing the, the potential for additional articles that would be relatively simple modifications to our current zoning bylaws and additional rules and regulations that could address some of these identified challenges. So what we, what I've presented here for your consideration for this upcoming town meeting is a modification to our existing stormwater management regulations and within the zoning bylaw, as well as some new additional language that provides direction and standards for low-impact design, planning and development strategies. So currently, relatively recently, town meeting voted to amend the zoning bylaw to include language relative to additional pollutants beyond nitrogen. The language had included phosphorus as, and other volatile organics and other pollutants to improve water quality. And we included language that would seek to encourage the deployment of stormwater low-impact development, planning, and development strategies. So in this article, we are proposing to take that from a encouragement where feasible to a requirement and to further add language that was actually recommended by the Santuit Pond Study and language recommended by Foson O'Neil. So we felt that if we are going to require low-impact development strategies, then we should offer or prescribe appropriate methods for such strategies. So this article, again, makes a, an encouragement where feasible into a requirement and provides standards for various scopes of development, if you will, from, you know, the, from your single-family dwellings all the way up to higher-density multifamily or commercial industrial projects. The design criteria and standards for low-impact design that we would be expecting, essentially to encourage more nutrient removal at the, at stormwater collection sites for new development and redevelopment. Again, we, we generally already require property owners, developers to submit with their development applications, stormwater operations and maintenance manuals. The planning board has always required them as part of their special permit applications. And those operation and maintenance plans are carried through in perpetuity, property to property owner, as real property is conveyed. The standard does apply also to the Board of Appeals and single-family homeowners, but we want to make sure that these operation and maintenance plans are taken in and, and made enforceable thereafter. So that's just one thing that does exist in the bylaw that we're not proposing to change, but we want to keep on our eye on to make sure that we're, we're meeting those minimum standards as defined in the zoning bylaw, so.
So this article's not changing anything?
No, no, no. I, I'm only referring to, in that, my last few sentences, the collection and enforcement of stormwater operation and maintenance plans. This is not a substantial deviation in terms of permitting strategy or cash investment.
Your enforcement.
But it's, it is saying we are, we are requiring either developer or property owner to deviate from a conventional stormwater collection strategy, which is to facilitate the capture of stormwater and leaching into groundwater as quickly as possible with little to or no treatment. We want to see low-impact design strategies be deployed on these sites where we might be able to better remove nutrients at the site of stormwater collection, utilizing things like bio swales and green roofs and, and the like. So that's what we have prepared for your consideration for this upcoming town meeting. And I'm happy to field any questions. I, I should note to the board that there are three articles I've prepared here. This could probably exist as a singular article because it's proposing to amend one section of the zoning bylaw in multiple areas. But it could have been a complex article for me to produce in a very short amount of time. So to get it to you relatively efficiently, I've proposed three separate articles, but it's potential working with council, we could do this as one, but.
Because I don't want you to confuse people by putting it.
What I wanted to avoid doing was, because there's so much, just tweaks of. What I wanted to avoid doing was, because there's so much, just tweaks of a word or a phrase here or there, or the insertion of a word or a phrase, whereas to produce the entire section of the bylaw into a single article would be quite long. It's pretty, there's a fair amount of standards included in this bylaw, so I felt like it would be simpler, at least for the purposes of producing it, to make it three, because I needed to get it too quickly.
Are they reliant upon each other?
They are not, but it, I would say that the first article you see, amending Section A, where we're transitioning or proposing the transition from encouraging to requiring, we felt that if we were to require, we should provide the requirements, what the standards are. So, to, if there is support for the first, it would make a heck of a lot of sense from an administrative standpoint, and for clarity for applicants to make sure that we approve the subsequent two.
If I, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, I mean, do we have to recommend to have, if we would put a hold on this, do we have to add it for consideration of the planning boards, so the planning board can vet it prior to our next meeting, if that's possible?
This is a zoning article. Generally, the zoning act requires the select board to transmit to the planning board a memorandum, including the totality of the zoning articles to be considered for a public hearing. However, I should note that the planning board met last Wednesday and discussed this as a general concept, and submitted by vote of the planning board unanimously the first portion of this article. But I did not have an opportunity to review and scrutinize the Fussin' O'Neill memorandum, where they reviewed the bylaws and made requirements, or, excuse me, suggestions for bylaw changes, until after the planning board meeting, I think it was on Thursday. And so, once I read their recommendations, it felt prudent to make sure that some of their recommendations, providing clarity for these low-impact design strategies, were included in the article already reviewed and voted on by the planning board. And so, we, I did meet with the chair and vice chair this morning, along with some of our other department heads, to discuss this as a general concept, and we feel that there would be generally support of the planning board to include this additional clarity. But we certainly could include this article for the planning board's consideration on their next meeting, which is September.
Have you talked to the zoning board? Are they aware of this change?
I have not spoken with the zoning board of appeals.
Because it is a zoning bylaw?
It is, but again, the building department is the enforcement arm of the bylaw, and the planning board establishes the policy.
So, I guess my question is, can the planning board review these three articles prior to our next meeting without us adopting them, or do we have to add them to the...
I would add them.
We have to add them for them to be considered?
Yes.
And as long as the planning board, I mean, if you're okay with that, I mean, this way, the planning board can review it, and then at our next meeting, we can take, we can use the recommendation of the planning board, who kind of, you know, will dig into this a little deeper.
I should note, the planning board will not have an opportunity to hold a public hearing on this matter, but they could discuss the content and form of the, or an article, and at least provide you with some consensus or lack thereof regarding its importance to be included in this upcoming town meeting.
Well, because we, the board, are putting it before the residents.
Yes.
We're submitting the article.
Right. So, that being said, I'd like to motion that we add the three articles to the warrant for consideration, in turn, would be reviewed by the planning board. Do we know that they would be meeting before the 12th? Thumbs up, they will be. Okay, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having a first and second, all those in favor?
Can we have further discussion on this before?
Oh, sure.
So, on these, on these articles that you're looking, I'm looking at, the treatment of groundwater, is there any negative impact to a well, wells in that area where this water's being treated? And what's it being treated with? Is there a negative impact?
No, there shouldn't be. The current stormwater standards already prescribe minimum setback distances to, like, onsite wells, and there's no proposed change to that, and there's no treatment of stormwater other than utilizing vegetation and natural organic materials for natural filtration that we're considering here. So, there, this would not be any, there would bear no negative impact to drinking water or to...
But it is a, it's something that would be checked before they would pump the system out or to let it leach out into the area where the wells would be. That would not be allowed, I'm guessing.
I'm not sure I completely understand the question, Tom.
Well, if you, it says that it was, in the first paragraph, I think it said there was a treatment system there. And it's been artificial recharge. Did that include any, any type of chemical or filtration system now?
None, nothing but natural organic filtration, so like going through sand or being taken up by vegetation.
Okay, so it, all right.
Yeah, no chemical treatment is being proposed here.
Okay, that's, that's all, that's how it's always looking.
Good. Do I have a motion and a second?
Yes. And this is just to add to the warrant, so then it could be reviewed by the planning board?
All those in favor say aye.
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 That passes unanimously.
Thank you. I suppose I will be reporting back to you at your next meeting. I will be on vacation in the middle of September, so I will humbly ask the chair, vice chair to report on my behalf.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Was there any other adds at this time? Lee is on reports?
I'm good.
I'm okay.
Hearing on town manager updates.
I've got a couple, but I think, given the time, we're gonna, because we got another long discussion ahead, so I, or maybe not a long discussion, but I'm all set for now.
We will not be reconvening after.
That is correct, sir.
So, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session. We will not be reconvening in public session. So, good night, everyone. Thank you for your attendance and input. Have a good night and safe travels home.
Motion to enter into executive session, August 22nd, 2022. I move the board convene in executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy regarding negotiations with non-union personnel relative to the personal administration, plan with the following collective bargaining units, where an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Mashpee Permanent Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 2519, Mass COP Local 324, Unit A Patrol Officers and Detectives, Mass COP Local 320, Unit B Sergeants, Laborers International Union of North America, LIUNA Luna, Mass Public Employees Local 1249, Administrative Unit A Administrators, Laborers International Union of North America, LUNA, Mass Public Employee Local 1249 Administrators, Unit B Administrators, Mass COP Local 477 Administrators, Unit C Police Lieutenants, Service Employees International Union, SEIU, AFL-CIO Local 888, Public Works Unit A, Service Employees International Union, SEIU, AFL-CIO Local 888, Public Works Unit B, Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 888, Clerical Library Dispatch Chapter, from which the board will not reconvene in open session.
We've never done all of these at once like this. We have?
I think we dispersed the reading.
I know.
Once I started, I was like, damn.
Nobody really cared.
Did you take a vote?
No, you need to second it and...
Do I have a second on the motion? Having a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we gotta shut that...
We have to wait, yes.
There's still...